I've been saying, now listen, and you answer legit question. And he said that's his opinion. You in charge of this meeting, and you ask a question about the three people. And all they had to say, yes or no. And I don't see no problem in that. You're legally right.
That's your opinion.
No, 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 no.
He's an attorney.
Sorry, sorry. Can I let you speak? Or can him speak?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Like was stated, you asked the question, and they should have. You asked them about the three people. And all they had to say was nay or yeh. And so, you in charge of this meeting. And to me, like some kind of conspiracy against the mayor. And I have a problem with that. Because you in charge of the meeting. And in this meeting, you more or less, they, and I have a problem with it. They try to override you. And our legal counsel said, and he said it kind of beautifully. He said, "This is my opinion." He said, "Well, this written in stone." That's all I'm saying. And how do three people, and let me go on to watch, let me go on to watch New Orleans. I miss my other show. And you know, problem with that. And you said, "Well, table that, you need some more data," which I thought was legit. About the other person, you can hide him. But all you ask for, "I need more data." And I can't see a problem in that. What I see here is some kind of conspiracy against the mayor. Now, I have a problem with that. Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, holy is thy name. We come before the throne, realizing that you are all-power in thy hand. First of all, we ask that you forgive us for our inconsistencies in our sins. Pray a special prayer for the council members as they participate together in cohesionness and working together and bring this city to a place that we will be proud of. And God, we ask that you forgive all of us and God protect all of us as we be supported. And bless the city manager, Mr. Herron, in the special way that he continues to lead this city in the way that you want him to do. And God, we ask you to bless the citizens as well as the council member. Each council member by name, God, we ask you to guide and protect us. Forgive us for our sins again. And God protect you and your brother and妹妹.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Now, we are going to start with item number one, which is the adoption of the agenda. Unless there are any changes, modifications, any amendments?
Mayor, the only thing I'd like to add to my report is a garden club grant update. Please, item number sixteen.
Is it ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item sixteen, garden club. Are there any more? Now, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the item number sixteen added under the city manager's report for the garden club update? So, is there a second?
Sure.
Questions, concerns? All in favor, raise your hand. It should now. Item number two is the approval of May 2015 minutes. The May fifth regular meeting and the May eighth call meeting.
In the May eighth call meeting, Ms. Hudson, you did not add Mr. Blankesi as in attendance. You did note that he made some motions, but you did not make note that he was in attendance in the call meeting.
Is that it? Well, there was one that I noticed. It was on, I believe, the same meeting, May eighth, item number five. Okay, it's the first paragraph. It's the second sentence. It says, "Mayor Brown stated that he has the city attorney to research any ordinance that's covering the installation of ponds." It seems here that this was done. To me, I can't tell whether it was done before or after the pond was already dug, so.
Okay.
And this was, and I don't even know if I asked Mr. Spencer. We can ask him to expound on that, but Mr. Chip Carroll came to the meeting, but he left after. Did he talk to you, Mr. Spencer? It was on the agenda, and I don't know why he left, but he left. And then about two weeks later, the pond was dug. That's my estimation. And I hadn't talked to anybody, you know. And so, then I called, I called Mr. Spencer, and he informed me that he had done research already. We had checked the charter, the ordinance is, called the S R C.
No, I didn't say call the S R C. What I said was that there was nothing in our zoning ordinance that regulated the installation of ponds. And when Mr. Carroll was here, that meeting that he left, I told him that I had not had time to research to see if the city had regulated or not. And if he came in and made an application, by that time I would be able to tell him whether the city had any jurisdiction or not. Came in and made the application, and in the interim, he just started digging the pond once he talked to the R D C. And they told him that our zoning ordinance did not cover the pond. But that's how that came down. Rather than him wasting the council's time, and I told him I did not look into it to see where the city's position should be on it until, when he came up here for that meeting.
I just wanted to reflect that there was no permission from the mayor or the city attorney. That doesn't, it looked like, just looked like we were discussing it.
You want me to note that if the discussion happened prior to this meeting? Prior to the pond installation?
Okay, okay. It may have to prior to the meeting, but after, after, yes, after the ponds.
After the pond prior to the meeting.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Would you then need to refer to the tapes on that to confirm that before we adjusted the minutes to reflect that? Because then you would have, you would need to refer to the tapes to reflect that.
As far as what was said, yes, I would definitely have to go back to the recordings and confirm how it was stated. And once, if this is, if it's stated the way it's in the minute, then of course I'll contact, let you all know.
So. Thank you very much. So that means we had two corrections made on the eighth. If they're going to have to be tabled, are they laid on the table or?
I think you could have a motion proven for corrections. And if Rooney finds that there's a conflict between the tape, then it would just have that particular May eighth meeting would have to be tabled until, should have to bring it back if the tape did not agree with your decision.
I understand. All right. Is there a motion to approve the May fifth regular meeting and the May eighth call meeting with the corrections as council member Bradley stated? And I guess, once you listen to the tapes to see what went down.
I'll make a formal motion to make adjustments to the meeting on the May eighth call meeting, correcting that Councilman Blankesi was present because he was present, and that upon your review of the tapes from the call meeting, to make adjustments to the meeting in regards to the pond issue upon your review of the tapes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? It should now. Thank you. Item number three is a city clerk's report, which will be given to us by.
Of course, you all found some of the gifts I left you all, the city clerk's new lead, as well as the activity reports from the different departments. I also wanted to share working paperwork that I've been working on for the budget fifteen, sixteen. What I would like to ask is if the council would so like to have a call meeting, to have a formal work session, to discuss the fifteen, sixteen budget here. As you see, we're out of balance. I think it's just the key and arrow on my part of the general fund. I'll have to go and review all of the different departments. But the telecommunications fund, I reviewed in detail, and there's, as you can see, a deficit. If you would prefer a, as you can, I'm available all week. Can you see here, we discuss what some of the challenges are, maybe some of the ideas the council has on how we can handle the telecommunications issues. And I think the city manager is going to be a little involved in that.
So, I would think that, I know ten years after, we all get a couple of days to review what Ms. Hudson has presented us today. If you have any suggestions or concerns, to kind of submit them to her at least by next week's, how soon?
Friday.
By this Friday? By this Friday. And if it's okay with you and Mr. Herron, we'll work together. I'll work with Ms. Hudson and Mr. Herron on a budget retreat or meeting. To get with you guys on what we, what's a good day to meet that we can work with and on the budget.
I would also like to say that you all know that there's certain steps that have to be taken. On Friday, the fifth, or probably Monday, I'll schedule Barney, he'll be the latest time to submit the budget to the paper. Certain going papers government for fourteen days minimum. Will be posted for fourteen days.
So then, let's kind of shoot for, I know today is Tuesday. Let's all try to make a collective effort to at least go over it tonight so that we can submit to her by Thursday.
And then the public hearing would be scheduled for six twenty-four. We looked at some of the dates. Then of course, after the public hearing, council has to collectively get together in a call meeting to approve. One of the stumbling blocks will be that the weekend is the conference from G M A. I'm not sure how everybody's travel arrangements are. We're probably leaving on the twenty-sixth or twenty-fifth. But some of the dates that would be possible is six twenty-five, six thirty for a call meeting, or the absolute latest date in the form would be July one. The only thing is if there's any issues that come up at that time, then we would definitely have to scramble and extend the current budget.
So, if there's any reports, will we look for every council member to submit any of their concerns or requests for a budget to, as I read the date that we can't agree to submit that? And then after that, I guess we'll, if there's any conflicting issues with council members on the budget, then we'll work from the fourth to kind of work it out. Or we'll set a date after the fourth for, take it together with a budget retreat.
Okay.
Now, I won't be going to the G M A conference.
Okay.
So, will you be going?
Yes. Turn a lot of gas on that.
Okay, yeah. Okay. All right. Is, are we all in agreeance? All right. Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions, the city clerk? Okay. Thank you. Item number four, the city attorney's report.
I've passed out the report to everyone, Mr. Mayor. One thing I want to point out just strictly as an item of interest, as we have such a good crowd here. Somewhere in Brooks County, there are four National Geographic cameramen following some swamp person that's living in the boonies down here in Brooks County. If you've seen the National Geographic Channel, the legend of Mick Dodge, this is something like that. And what had happened, they had called and said, you know, they may want to come up into town and do some filming, follow this guy around when he comes to town, but, and that's how that came to my attention. And their lawsuit regarding the incident down here at the old Charlie's grocery with the death of that individual is still one of them. There are going to be depositions and all of this variety will not be directly anticipated since the insurance companies attorney handled the city. But I just wanted to ask the city, the council, that is, while I'll answer any questions anyone asks.
Well, I question, I just want to share, Ms. Bauer and I were at the working women's luncheon, and representative from the Georgia Department of Film, oh, Ms. Hudson was there as well, and she talked about all the great locations that were registered with the agency that kind of moderates different film locations throughout Georgia. And Brooks County and the city equipment has some ideal places that will be, hopefully, in some major films coming up soon. So, we have a beautiful city and some beautiful areas, and it's been very exciting to hear the buzz on our area being selected or possibly getting selected in its motion films. So, I think that is great, and I'm excited about this National Geographic film festival.
All right. Thank you. Item number five would be the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number one, it's Brooks County Library Report. I'm Scott Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad to be here tonight, and glad to have joining me, Mr. Scott Rotson, who will be taking over the helm of the library July first. So, I think the community can look forward to a number of wonderful years under his leadership. And we also have activities for May. We were not, did not have as much going on in May because we were getting ready for the vacation reading club. We gave you the calendar for June last month, and if you look at the back of the handout we gave you, we also have some activities going on in July. So, and you will note that as one of Mr. Rotson's alter egos, he does little balloon animals and such, so.
It's a long story. Well, now, I'm just, with your permission and your indulgence, being a, when I first became a librarian thirteen, fourteen years ago, I started as insurance services, and that's where my niche is. As you get to know me, you'll discover, instead of an inner child, I have an outer child sometimes. To quote a friend of mine, Andy Oferdor, that's what he called me. Anyway, children would routinely come into the library and ask, "Do you, can you juggle?" "No, but I've always wanted to learn, so now I know how to juggle." "Can you make balloon animals?" "No, but there's a probably really good book, let's go check it out." And frankly, it allows you to be a kid. It allows you to have some playtime, and typically in the middle of a very busy day. So, we would, my boss, director would come by, and I'd be blowing up balloons, and he would just carry on like that. And so, yes, I can have a lot of fun. So, if you ever need balloon flowers, hats, jewelry, various and sundry items, please call me. I'll gladly come with my bucket of balloons, and I'll be glad to help.
Thank you, Mr. Council. I would like to say welcome.
Thank you, sir.
To the city of Cleveland and the best library in Brooks County.
I agree.
When will you be?
I'm already, I'm already working, I'm already working currently, getting, learning a lot from Miss Laura. Officially, I guess, we'll get you July first, July one, one July.
Oh, I'm aboard.
Thank you. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there no other comments?
Item number two is employing appointments, and the termination will be under executive session. But the following employees are presented for ratification. Rooney Hudson, city clerk. Benjamin Wayne Wright, firefighter. Trevor Kellogg Gilcom, firefighter. And Leroy Waters, public works, or parks and publics research.
This is Rooney Hudson. Seeing all of her big work. And Mr. Benjamin Wayne Wright, and Mr. Trevor Gilcom. And I believe, are they here? Would you like to introduce them?
Young men that we're fortunate to have, both of you attend a wide grass program, or five science program. Case, he's already certified and Kellogg, he's testing our nation, nation Monday, I believe. It's Monday, he was testing our Monday, so he was certified. These are young men over here. Two men stood up, young men.
Well, welcome. On behalf of the city council of Cleveland, Georgia. And if there was like anything you'd like to say?
Glad for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Are they eight, two?
I had the same question. Yes.
Very well. And I actually saw the, with Ms. Hudson, Mr. Wayne Wright, and Mr. Gilcom, I seen the newspaper article, but I could not find the one for Mr. Waters.
This was published several months ago. It was put in as a mowing and maintenance position. This would be a part-time position, but he is a previous city employee, had worked for us years ago. But it was saying, it was an ad that we've had another vacancy for quite a while in that department.
Because I searched back through the articles, and I go back to, I just select one.
That was it. It was the same, that's it.
Okay. I think we should now, one article at least once a month.
Once, once a month for the entire month?
Uh, once a month, yeah.
At least, at least one every week. I recommend at least once a month.
What's the standard? What do we, what do we regulate? What have we done to that?
We usually just advertise position until filled. Sometimes within a week or two, depending on the need for the position. Public safety, I'm not sure how often the chief runs it.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. I think the police department runs it, maybe two weeks.
We should run it once a month, so I don't have to look back months just to find out where, the way the article is. And is Mr. Waters here?
No, sure he's not.
And who exactly hired Mr. Waters?
I'm sorry?
Who exactly recommended Mr. Waters?
I looked through the existing applications, and that's who I recommend. It's a, it's a position y'all certainly can hold off on.
No, I was just, um.
I'm the one that reviewed those positions. I talked to the department head. He had worked with the department head prior as a city employee, and was highly recommended by the department head that he would be assigned to. This position will be kind of a catch-all position, mosquito sprayer, mowing, sidearm, tacko, bush hog, maintenance of city property, lawn mowing, weed eating, things of that nature. So, they'll be doing quite a bit of different things. But it will be part-time.
Do you know exactly when this article was run for?
Several months ago. I don't know the exact date. I think we had discussed it before on the other two gentlemen that were hired in the parks committee. So, it was the same ad. That's the one. And those applications were put in. If we had somebody that left under those circumstances, I would still review the existing applications. If y'all would prefer we re-ad, re-advertise to that position, that's fine. He has not been promised the position.
Yes, so, I would like to, yes, maybe a little more to.
Would that require a vote? Because I don't see the need for, I don't, I, I don't understand.
Okay, you understand, I was saying. We have to have a. Okay, you understand, I was saying, um, we have to advertise. We can't just hire people off the street, because if we do, we can be sued. Because, because we are equal opportunity employer, and there's an equal opportunity if it's advertised. So I went back and I looked all the way back from March, maybe March, and I didn't, I didn't see this. So, um, and I believe that we should advertise more often, instead of just once. And someone gets the job and someone walk around here says, I never even saw the advertisement, and I just want to keep down the confusion. And so I would like to either not re-advertise this or, we'll, we'll see once I see when the advertisement, how long ago it actually was.
I mean, I can totally, I can totally understand what you're saying, but I'm saying that if there's a direction, all directions the city manager needs to go to a vote before the council. And he already advises that it hasn't advertised. If, I'm sure there's a record of the advertisement in the numbers here.
Yeah.
And then we can validate the advertisement. But I'm saying that any direction the city manager needs to be brought to a vote before the city council. Any direction to him needs to be brought to a vote before the city council is all. Because that's just the, I'm asking, is there going to be a vote on it? Because that's not the way direction can be given to him.
There's not going to be a vote on Mr. Waters.
I agree with you, that's right.
I need, I need to see, I need to see the paperwork, I need to see.
And I will be glad to re-advertise.
If there, if the process is already happening, and if the process is already happening, is that the department head's discretion, that the position has been advertised, the department head has selected an applicant, you've approved the application and the applicant, and the process has already been put in place, I don't see the need for the expense to re-advertise, I don't see the need for the, to continue. And all I'm saying is that we're collectively a group, all things have to be brought to and decided upon by the majority. All direction to the city manager has to be decided upon by the majority. I totally respect your decision and what you're saying. This is just my opinion as a council member, Ms. Brad, Ms. Bauer is in agreement, then there should be, all directives to Mr. Herring should be brought to a vote. So if there's a, it should, it should be brought to a vote is all I'm saying.
Well.
Well, that's why we have a city manager.
Yes, but I haven't seen an application, I haven't seen an article.
There's so, there's, that's the point of having a city manager, so that we don't have to be inundated with looking over applications. That's not our responsibility. And I think that if he's already.
Mrs. Bradley, you've spoken long enough, okay. And I'm going to sit here and debate this thing. I have, I've spoken. And I have not seen, I went back, unless you think you could really go get the article right now?
It's in the safe file. The newspaper, it would be in the newspaper is where it's at.
Well, I, I researched all the way back to March, March, it'll be next Tuesday.
And, and if I may, it's no different than what the police department, fire department does, sometimes they'll test twenty or thirty people. They may pick somebody and then have to move down the list as it does, they don't re-advertise. If they have somebody wash out in a week, they don't re-advertise that position, am I correct? They would just go down their list of applicants at that point.
But I've seen their advertisement, I've seen Mrs. Hudson's advertisement, I haven't seen Mr. Waters' advertisement. So the discussion.
I don't, I mean, I, I don't, um, at this point, I, I, I'm still, I, I don't know, um, I don't, I don't understand, Mr. Mayor, what, are you saying that?
I have no information in front of me, no hard facts in front of me.
But even, even though we don't have it in, in front of you as an individual, we're saying that collectively, what the city manager has already presented to us as a council, either we're going to make a vote as a council to decide what direction the city manager needs to go further, or either we're making the decision tonight that what he has already decided is sufficient. And I would, I would think that it would be fair, besides Ms. Bauer and I have already offered our opinion, I don't know what Mr. Walker's opinion is or what Mr. Langley's opinion is on this. So I think that the fair thing would be to give everyone's opinion as to how he should further proceed as a group.
Okay, well, privacy rules are the same, everyone has to address. Is she?
I'm talking directly to you.
Okay, what you're talking to Bauer earlier. And I didn't, I didn't actually even, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't address, but you have to ask for permission to speak. And I did not give you permission to speak, you just started talking about this. And, and now you, you're making this longer, you just said the same thing over and over again. And I told you, my decision is that we don't make judgments off of. I need to see information.
We, Mr. Mayor, we implies that you're, we implies a group of individuals, I implies me. So I'm, what my point is, and I'm speaking directly to you, my point is that.
Did I actually say you could speak? Or was I through speaker?
No, I didn't, I didn't necessarily.
Well, you need to, you need to read, I need to give you permission to speak. That's why I was.
I don't think that's correct.
That, that is correct. Mr. Spencer, the chairman has to be addressed and.
The chairman is supposed to recognize an individual to talk, okay? But, you know, the chairman, I think, is also a essential requirement to, to recognize the individuals that won't to address, the chair won't to address. I mean, discussion, for discussion to be held requires a two-thirds vote. But an individual to speak, whether it's an audience, or the council should be recognized by the chair.
And I do recognize it, and I'm not trying to stifle anyone, but what I'm saying is, I have spoken, I said that we need information, we need, I, I make decisions off of information, not not information. And, and you keep saying the same thing over and over again. And and the, and the charter does say that I can cease any discussion at any time. Otherwise, you could talk for the next hour if you wanted to. So I've heard your point, and it's been duly noted. Did you get the notes, Mrs. Speaker?
Um, I think we should take the city attorney's recommendation. If we make the requirements for the advertisement, uh, length or how many times.
The problem is, is you, you have, I'm going to let you speak, I'm saying, no one's shown me anything. I, I haven't, I don't know if, if it was advertised or not, do you, do you, have you seen it?
I have researched it.
Okay, I, I, I have, and I didn't find anything. So I'm just asking for some confirmation. So, so we're going to have to. Is there a motion to ratify Ms. Rooney Hudson, Rooney Hilda Hudson, of the city clerk position? Mr. Benjamin Case Wayne Wright for firefighter? Mr. Trevor C. Kellogg Gilcom as a firefighter? Is there a motion for those three individuals?
Just remember that, going to the city attorney's.
Is that what it's called? Yes, what do you say, Mr. Spencer?
Yeah, I didn't, the city manager brought the recommendation that, I think we're, all, I think all of you rely on this recommendation based on past performance and everything else. But I said, I, I don't know.
At the city attorney's recommendation, I'll entertain a formal motion to, based on the city attorney's recommendation, and on my full faith and trust in the city manager, I'll make a formal motion that we approve the.
I repeat to you, Mrs., I did not, I did not acknowledge you, I did not acknowledge you.
You asked with their emotion.
I asked Mr. Spencer, and then you started speaking at this time.
Okay.
I said, is there a motion for those three individuals?
You don't get to determine what the motion is made, you call for a motion and a motion is made simply by the person, what a person wants to make a motion by, you don't get to determine what my motion is. I can make a motion, you may not, I can make a motion on, on anything once you call for a motion. So you're asking for a motion, all you, all you have to do is ask for a motion. You don't get to specify what motion you get to ask to be made. A motion can be made of any determination.
Did I give you the floor?
You just.
I made a statement. I didn't see. Is there a motion to ratify Ms. Rooney Hudson, Rooney Hilda Hudson, as a city clerk? Mr. Benjamin Case Wayne Wright as a firefighter? And Mr. Trevor C. Kellogg Gilcom as a firefighter? Is there a motion for those three individuals?
Yes, I'll make that motion for the three and also add Leroy Waters.
Your motion is out of order.
Can he deny my motion?
I don't know of any grounds, Mr. Mayor, but you completely refuse to accept the motion, whether it's under Robert Schulz's order or our charter, since I was answered.
I have asked for information, and information has not been supplied. And that's how I make decisions.
I'll second Ms. Bauer's motion.
You are, you are out of order also.
I will second Ms. Bauer's motion on ratification from Hillary Hudson, from Benjamin Case Wayne Wright, Trevor C. Kellogg Gilcom, and Mr. Leroy, Leroy Waters at this time. I will second her motion. And if two-thirds of the council agrees with the motion.
And you were speaking without giving a shout.
Then the vote can be called.
That is not the way it works.
If there are two-thirds of the, of the council who agrees with the motion and the second, please raise your hand at this time.
You're still speaking. You, you were not giving.
Can we go ahead and raise our hand? You can raise your hand because.
You know, you know.
So majority rules, and the motion has been made and seconded, Ms. Hudson, you can note that the motion has been made and seconded and voted.
And Mrs. Nikki Bradley is out of order.
And you can write that too.
And.
General Assistant Attorney, is, 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 the law says that if a motion has been made, it's been seconded, two-thirds of the council agree and have voted on the motion, that's a legal motion, vote and the vote has passed.
I tend to agree. It's not, it's not the usual situation where the chair refuses to take, to accept the motion in a discussion from GMA shirt times and, uh, it's not something that they say they have to go every day.
Well, I've been trained to, and we follow order, and order states that. Our charter said that we will spend as much time necessary to make sure that this city's running efficiently. And efficiency is having evidence, having paperwork, having something to back up my decision above, instead of saying, he told me, or she told me, that's not going to work in court. Abridence is no excuse, ignorance is no excuse for not following the law. So I would not let the council vote on something that we have no evidence on. And our charter, let's go back to the Robert Schulz order. Robert Schulz order does not override state law, federal law, our charter, our bylaws. It is almost in last place as far as documentation or procedures and policies is concerned. Robert Schulz order is just to keep order in here so that we can get through this meeting officially. And a forty-five minute meeting does not end up being three hours. But it does not circumvent any standards or any law. And we make decisions based off of information, and that information needs to have a paper trail. So that is why I will not let us follow Mr. Waters, who isn't here. I haven't seen the article, I haven't seen his application or his resume.
Well, we've already voted.
And yes, that's the name.
But we've already voted.
Okay, well, when it's time for you to sign the check in the payroll?
That's okay.
So that means that none of these people.
They're all higher, they, they, they've all been voted, they've all been just ratified by this council.
Yes, that's.
We all raised our hands, the majority has.
I did not call for the vote.
Okay. We called, we called for the vote.
You cannot call for the vote.
We all called collectively as a group, we just did.
You can't, you can't, I, I, I know what you.
You don't have, you don't have to accept it, but we just did it.
It's not efficient.
You're out of order.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. Could we, could we please just vote on these three people that are here then, and not hold these young men in limbo as to, because, because of the refusal to vote on another person who is. But they do not deserve to be held in limbo as to whether or not they have their jobs ratified. And I don't feel that that's right now. I have a question about if, if Mr. Herring has to re-go through all of this again and through, through the expense of it, and the time, what are we, I mean, we're not going to have mosquito spraying and all those things that, that Mr. Waters is going to do. And that, that to me is not in the best interest of our community. But aside from that, I mean, can't we just go ahead and for the sake of having Chief Phillips having his full force? But I mean, we're talking about fire department, we're talking about people's lives here. We can't just kick people in limbo about their jobs and him not having a workforce.
I agree, and that's why I said this, ratify these three personnel, Ms. Rooney and Hilda Hudson, says city clerk, Mr. Benjamin Case Wayne Wright as a firefighter, and Mr. Trevor C. Kellogg Gilcom as a firefighter. Is there a motion to ratify these three personnel?
I, I guess I'm going to follow any promise that from last time. Although I've already been ruled out of order, this vote that the council has already taken is a legally binding vote.
You are out of order.
There are, there are rules, there are rules to overrule the chair. This is, their jobs are not in jeopardy.
You are out of order.
All four people have been ratified, hired, appointed, appointed to our life.
You are out of order. She is out of order, I did not give her the floor, you are out of order. You are out of order.
There's no, there's no discrepancy in that. Well, you told me they are last.
You, you are out of order, did I give you the floor? You are out of order. You walked out of the last meeting, or the one before, and the people needed business handled.
They're trying to handle this.
And that's what they're going to do, or not. Motion for those three individuals, as I stated.
We've already voted.
You have not, it's not efficient, you are out of order. Well, we have. We said item number sixteen yet, we have fourteen more items. Are we ready to go for the termination? Are we going to skip that and do that last?
Executive session or that?
We are going to, but I don't know if they're going to go to executive session because of this, that's why I'm asking them.
Whatever the board you wish to go.
So are you all ready to go to executive session for this termination?
Oh, it took it on the line.
The tur, the executive session?
Yeah.
And? Okay, and, um, Chris Rooney Hudson, would you put in here that, that the motion was out of order? And it's not efficient, and we're going to.
My pleasure to introduce Mr. Jerome Tucker, he's the USDA. I've talked with him briefly on this red leg program, and he'd like to make the presentation of the program to the council. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you. Oh, yeah, my name is Jerome Tucker, I'm from Valdosta. And I've got one job and three responsibilities with the USDA. Tonight is responsibility, I work with the USDA program, it's, has to do with economic development. About five years ago, the USDA asked me to help them deliver their program to. About five years ago, the USDA asked me to help them deliver their program uh, to rural communities. And uh, that's a community of less than fifty thousand people. And one of the programs that's available is called a uh, rural business development loan grant program. Uh, deal with government, you know acronym, we call it Red Lake. Uh, Rural Economic Development Loan Grant Program. And the uh, program designed for utility companies, EMCs, uh, to help with the economic development in rural areas. Uh, several years ago, um, I tried, had a project that was ideal for this and I tried to work with a couple of EMCs to access the program. And they were a little bit reluctant. And the city of Adele, the city manager heard me talking about, uh, I couldn't get anybody to use the program. And he asked me what about the city of Adele. And I told him, I said, it's designed for uh, utility companies. And uh, and I asked a question. And Adele liked uh, equipment, has its own utility, has uh, electricity, as a utility. And wrote a letter, application to DC and they approved it. Adele, Georgia was the first city in the state of Georgia that utilized the program. Uh, since then, there's been several across the state, several across countries that utilize. And the program is USDA will loan the city, uh, entity, a million dollars, interest free, for economic development. Now you are responsible for that million dollars. And in a minute, I'll show you some of the pro, some of the programs that it's used for. Uh, the idea is for not for the city equipment to use the money, but to relend the program, but on economic development projects. Uh, so here's, here's one, uh, to expand the car dealership, to renovate and abandon building to a green facility for the manufacturing of solar panels. Uh, to help John Wayne Society improve the interior of the museum and add new education displays to help build a fire station, to serve the city. Uh, it's for economic development, uh, for the community. Again, you make the application for approval. Uh, you don't have to draw the funds down then until you find the project that you wanna utilize it on. And then you do, you do diligence on the project. Because that initial fee has to be repaid. But you get the money at zero percent interest, you can charge one, two, three, five percent interest. And then you utilize that interest to create a revolving loan fund, for instance. Uh, or you can, the, the interest generator belongs to the city equipment. There's also a three hundred thousand dollar grant that comes with that program. It also be uh, utilized in economic development. You can buy equipment if you use the funds to build a facility. Uh, what uh, the city of Adele was doing, they loan, made a loan to the city of Nashville to ex, extend the gas, a natural gas line from Nashville to Lapham. And so you can loan it to non-qualifying communities. Uh, it's up to the city of Adele, but you are responsible for that, whatever amount of funds you get. You draw down, you are responsible for, so you need to make good use of it. Uh, but uh, again, the, the program is ideal. Um, uh, it doesn't, it does not cost you anything to become eligible. And you aren't on the hook for anything until you actually draw down funds. Uh, so I encourage communities to become eligible, and that's an application process. And uh, oh, and you know, the decision is whether you wanna be eligible or not, eligible or not. And then you're, between you and your Department of Economic Development, you decide on what you wanna use the funds for. Uh, if you wanna use it. You could be like um, uh, cer, cer, uh, cer, some communities that uh, they're, they just wanna have the money there that if a project comes up, I mean, that's, that's the holdup. That's what I do with economic development. They use the holdup as the financing. And if you wait until you get the project to start working on the financing, the project probably going somewhere else. Because there are communities that put financing in place of, uh, uh, industries and uh, business expansion to come into, uh, come into their communities. So uh, I'm here to just offer the program to you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to attempt to answer them. And if I don't have an answer, I'll, I bet you I'll find, know somebody that does.
I have one question.
Yes.
Suppose we get the money and we also have someone to give the money to of the loan. Suppose they don't pay, what happens then? Are we responsible for that?
You are ultimately responsible. That's why I say you do your due diligence with projects.
Could we use the one million dollars for a project um, that would be something that the city itself would be interested in? That's not a rule, that's not out in the county, like if we wanted to do something within the city limits. Could we use the million dollars for a project that we, we as a municipality are interested in doing?
Uh.
Or is the money only for lending, is my question?
Okay, the money is for, the money is for lending, but uh, there are certain projects. And there, there's another program. I, I anticipated that question. It's called community facilities. Uh, animal shelter, cemeteries, dykes, ocean pond, sprinkler system, uh, built daycare centers, um, courthouses. Uh, I got the Cook County, uh, look at, right at half a million dollars to build hangars at the airport. Uh, road paving, USDA, uh, they claim they can build, they can build a town. Uh, the hospital that's in Homerville, have you ever seen that new hospital on eighty-four in Homerville? That's USDA. Uh, these new Dodge Chargers, you see in these communities, that's USDA. I try to do things other than like build schoolhouses, so I don't have to put out so many chargers. And uh, don't have to build so many jailhouses, but uh, we are where we are. Uh, but uh, there are programs that's in place and, and these are, and depend on the county, there's grants that come along with that community facility program set. Uh, again, just the luck of the draw, city of Adele. Uh, got new fire trucks, new turnout gear. Uh, because USDA has six hundred thousand dollars that they're able to send back to DC. Uh, because they couldn't find anybody to use it. And I told them, let me try. And uh, I started telling communities I knew, and you know, your finances gotta be in order, you. You, you have to have a personnel that'll manage, and, and I caution many communities about this. Have a personnel that'll manage the funds. Cause it's, 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 it's a loan, it's money, just like you go to a banking and get. Uh, but uh, part of it's grant, and I'm not sure what Brooks County qualifies for. But uh, I do know it qualifies for what's an initiative called Strike Force, where it's communities, the poverty level is above twenty-two percent, persistent poverty. And it qualifies you for special attention. I'm, uh, and that's one of my responsibilities, is to work you through the process. Uh, I've had communities come back and say, I don't know how, I can't do this, don't have. You, you've got a clerk, you've got an attorney. All communities don't. Uh, and, but still, that does not disqualify you. Uh, we get the people down that are walking through the process and working with you. Uh, most of that, I tell folks, tell me what it is you wanna do, and I get the people in front of you that takes you through the process. And uh, the city of Adele, uh, they got ready to build a emergency resp, uh, EM, emergency EMS, EMC, uh, center also. Um, as well as paved streets, ru, uh, replace water meters, replace water lines. Um, and, and it's all within, within this program. Last Friday, I was in Wiggum, they wanna do a sewer system. And uh, it qualifies for the program. So, uh, that's my, that's my spiel. Um, right next door to you. Uh, my responsibility is the state, uh, so if you call, I, I will come. And uh, so a, any other questions?
If you could give me, I could have your card before you leave.
Okay.
Uh, and I believe there's someone here up under this USDA, mister, would you like to speak? Could you stand up and state your name?
Yeah, sure. Um, my name's Kyle Weiner.
Mr. clerk.
Um, my uh, wife and I own a company called Dreaming Cow. It's a, it's a yogurt company and we're in Brooks County. My family owns about two thousand grass-fed cows here in Brooks County, and I spent a number of years in Brooks County where I was growing up, building the farms. But uh, we uh, are the fastest growing yogurt company in America. We produce upwards of two hundred thousand cups of yogurt a week, and we market it as far east as Beijing and Malaysia. As far west, I mean, as far west as, I guess you'd go east that direction, but as far west as Beijing and Malaysia and as far east as the Caribbean. Um, and uh, we are trying to find funding to expand our facility in both distribution capacity and manufacturing capacity to grow that number to upwards of several million cups a week. And uh, so it would be in Dreaming Cow's interest to have access to these kind of funds to grow our business um, as, as efficiently as we can. And to answer uh, Ms. Bowers' question about if they were on the hook, I believe that Adele in the past has required the people who are accessing the money to produce a letter of credit equal to the amount that they're borrowing, so as to negate any risk that the city has. But it allows business like mine access to money at interest-free levels, which is wonderful. That's all. Thank you. I, yes, sir, I do believe.
And I've been after you guys, this facility out there in Barwick, and it is.
Oh, that's a different facility. We're in Payville.
Oh, you're in Payville. Well, no, it was, no, I'm sorry, it's in Payville. I, I was, I, I traveled there in Payville, I got the tour and, and it was, everything was really nice. I saw all the cows. I was really excited about your tracking system on how you keep track of the um, cows or.
I think you might be thinking of like maybe Brooksco, uh, where, where.
You know, I was out at Dreaming Cow.
Dreaming Cow? How long ago was this?
I met Ms. Janelle.
That's my wife, yeah, Janelle, the Kiwi. Yeah, okay.
I met Janelle, I'm here, and, and your beautiful little daughter was there, and her little mom.
Yeah. Got more now.
That was that many months ago. And she gave me the complete tour.
Excellent. I must've been out of town.
She told me about your Martha Stewart Award, or you all were acknowledged by.
Oh, yeah, that wasn't that long ago.
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago. You all had just gotten that. And, and your facility is great out there.
Thank you.
Well, that leads me to, another program we have called Business Industry, USDA. Uh, BNI program. Uh, it's for privately owned businesses to expand and grow, whatever, uh, whatever their desire to be. Uh, we just did a fifteen million dollar expand, uh, project with the Old Dale Cook facility there in Adele. Uh, we did um, two million dollar purchase with the Green World, oh, Green World Mulch Facility. Uh, now that's BNI, uh, again USDA, Hunt Industries, uh, but you, yeah, the, if you added the funds, you'd be dealing with your neighbors. Uh, and that's what we try to do, is drive the system down with people that know, people next door to them. Decisions are eas, easier made. Uh, banks still a little bit, little bit shotgun shot. Uh, but uh, USDA guarantees the loan in some cases, six to seven to eighty. Uh, and have got as high as ninety percent guarantee. Uh, and we build houses. Got the best housing program on the market. And one thing I tell folks is that I, I've got out of the individual homeownership, I'm more into uh, rental properties now because too many communities don't have jobs that even pay for a house. I have a program, I can sell your house, but without a job, I don't think you can pay for it. And uh, so, but anyway, uh, that's my story.
Thank you, sir. And uh, is anyone here from Thompson Farms?
Yes, Mr. Brer. Andrew Thompson, uh, Dixie, Thompson Farms, Country Security Meet. We've been processing hogs, raising our own hogs, and now for the last four years, we've been slaughtering two on the farm. Uh, my processing building is about twelve years old, we're USDA inspected, uh, we've got about fifteen employees. We're running out of room, we gotta have another building. And I've already talked, I got a lady from uh, close to Bainbridge, Wanda Hudson, that works on grants for me in the past, value-added grants. And a few months ago, she let me know about this Red Lake in Adele, city of Adele. I've already went through the Citizens National Bank and got my letter of guarantee from them. Their board has agreed to, to give me a letter, a letter of guarantee backing up the Red Lake. Uh, which they're using property and equipment I've already got. So that way, whether it's the city equipment or the city of Adele, they're not, they, they're covered. It won't never come back on them, because if I fail to make the payments, the city, the Citizens National Bank is gonna make the payments on it. I'm at the point where I gotta do something quick. We've already got a contractor. We're talking about building a little bit over a thirteen thousand square foot building. Coolers, freezers, processes, to where easily soon we'd be hiring another ten, twelve people. Uh, and with our slaughter facility and what's down the road with, which we sell through Whole Foods grocery chain, uh, we sell to Disney too, which we're all did, third-party audits, I mean, we've got everything, all the records and inspections that we have to do to sell to any meat facility. So the good Lord has blessed us uh, a lot more than what we deserve, and I'm giving him all the credit. Uh, I'm just looking for somebody, the reason we didn't go with Adele was because their mayor resigned, from what we understood, you know, a month or two ago. So kinda like what he mentioned, I need to be doing something. All right, I'm, I'm backing up now. I'm looking for somebody to take over to do this, because when you speak about zero percent interest on a million dollars, that makes a lot of difference on something like this. And so that's, that's the reason I'm here, the reason how I was born and raised here in this county. And uh, you know, I'm, I'm hoping y'all will accept this and go on to the next step for it. But uh, you know, again, I'm looking for whoever can help me the quickest, because I've already done a lot of my legwork already, you know, for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should've come over here a little earlier. I've been working up in North Georgia, though, I could've stayed closer to home, but uh, anyway, uh, it's, all the things you wanna do as a community, it's not gonna happen until you create jobs to put people to work. And that's why I enjoy doing what I do, and uh, and I call it creating jobs. Uh, if you've got any issue with your expansion, uh, talk to me. Uh, and it's, whoever the mayor is, I, I make sure I put the program in place, it doesn't matter who the mayor, or the city manager, or the, uh, those things, I put things in place that uh, for economic development, they go on. If something happened to me, the program goes on. That's why I like to talk with people in community, get folks access to the people they need to talk. So if something happened to me, the program goes on. It doesn't stop with me.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
But anyway, uh, with that, uh, if there's no other question?
Yes, you can card. I'll review all these, leave your card, you know. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Okay.
Anything they would like to say, Mr. Tucker?
Now, we're starting to need to discuss.
I would definitely stay with you, Bruce Turner, but I've already um, had a go over, you know, discussed it, what the recommendations are, kinda give us some information on, um, if you know, some anticipation on how the program works, what's the benefits for us? And um, sit down with them as a council and then make a decision if this is something that we need to embark, you know, a project we need to embark upon with the Brooks County Department of Works, but I would like.
Is there um, a suspension for the application? Is there a, a deadline?
No, it's, it's uh, it, it rolls on year-round. And uh, you mentioned Wanda Hudson, she's the best in the business. See if I was going that, if I was going to. See, if I was going to do an application to become relay, I would utilize, Ms. Hudson? She's got 100% track revenue.
I would definitely, because both of these businesses are in the county and outside of C-11. So I would like the advice of the Development Authority.
And they've already met with Mr. Tucker. They arranged Mr. Tucker to be here for these two, so there would be more than one.
I think that waiting would be great to set up with them.
All right. I'll be glad to meet with you, work through, work through your issues, expansion with you.
Thank you. Do we need to go ahead and take a vote, just in case you want to proceed over there? Have a call meeting once you find things out, suspension?
I think the board can do whatever it wants to do with that. Mr. Mayor, I think that they could vote to proceed to investigate it clearly. Or give a special call meeting to either one. All right, so.
Could I ask one question? And again, I'm desperate, but don't take this the wrong way. I would like to at least, I mean, y'all don't have to vote on it, but I'd like to see at least a show of hands who is interested in looking into it. Because if I didn't see with two hands, I'm not wasting no more time. I'm going to be in Adele begging them to go ahead and do it, or Thomasville. I'm going to be somewhere. And please, don't take it wrong, but I'm just thinking about the situation I'm in.
So I guess, is there a motion to proceed and-
Well, Mr. Thompson, I have tasted your sausage, and I would make a formal motion that the council directs Mr. Herring to set up a meeting with the Brooks County Development Authority for further information, and then immediately upon meeting with them as soon as possible with the Development Authority, we will get you some information. Well, this is my motion, that we meet as soon as possible with the Brooks County Development Authority-
For the red leg, correct?
For the red leg program to provide us the best information and how to proceed. It's my motion.
Is there a second?
You second? Just a second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your hand.
And as soon as we-
As unanimous, did you see the hands?
Yes, I saw them. Thank you.
And as soon as we meet Ms. Herring, Mrs. Herring, we'll-
Yeah, yes, okay. And she's got all my information. We've already had, so.
Thank you all. And I forgot to make the announcement that once we're done with you and your section or whatever, or your mistake for any time, it's up to you.
And the next meeting, we'd like cooked samples from you and prepared samples-
Actually brought some yogurt. His daughters help raise me.
Ms. Brink, will you show to the audience some of this yogurt?
And I don't have any cards in my wallet right now, but I'll read back a card. In my pocket.
Strike through.
If there are people out in the hallway that want to come and sit inside here, if you want to move around, change their seats, you can come in.
Item number four is Resolution Number 7, or 27415 with MIA Power. And the city would need to appoint an alternate moving delegate to MIA Power relations.
Is there a motion, or do you want to discuss it first? Is there a motion to appoint an alternate for MIA?
Who is the previous alternate?
Mr. Wendell Chisholm has served in the past. I have served in the past. I believe Ms. Bowers has served in the past.
And that's not to do with him?
Is there a motion to take this back?
I'm making a formal motion. This power will be the alternate.
Do we need to state the resolution? Or Resolution Number 274? Okay, so it's okay for-
So, making a formal motion to accept Resolution 274-15 for MIA Power. Ms. Bowers took the power as alternate.
Just one second, first of all. Can he, is there no conflict of interest? Is he totally right?
Was his motion to adopt the resolution appointing him, or was his motion to appoint Ms. Bowers the alternate?
Ms. Bowers.
I don't think that's-
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Questions? All in favor? Right there. It's unanimous. All in favor?
Thank you. Item number five has been withdrawn. Item number six is Georgia Department of Transportation update projects. Now, the LMEG project, the city has received the funds. Two issues on this. One, we would like to authorize Mr. Devane to move forward with the LMEG bid process and bid packages. Okay, I would need that in front of my-
Is there a motion?
I have a question before the motion. Is this going to be on the list that we discussed for 2015?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm making a formal motion that we authorize city engineer Ben Devane to proceed with the LMEG bid after this appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? All in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous.
Second item on that state DOT list. The consultants for the railroad closing project and the repaving projects has got to the point now where we have passed the last hurdle. Right now, we need to look at the possibility of obtaining right-of-way through those areas. I would also request that the council approve Mr. Devane to survey the needed right-of-way to the project area. I think the big area that we need there is Green Street. Where, if y'all remember, it's all dirt now. We're repaved. We will have to relocate some utilities there and a turnaround. So it would require right-of-way acquisition.
Is there a motion?
I have a question. Back is the Green Street, that's that big patch that is, that goes, connects it to Carney?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion?
I'm making a formal motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your hand.
Mr. Devane, I'll supply you with a-
Okay. I'll get with you next day or so.
Next item is a drainage ditch that we addressed at the last council meeting. I think Mr. Devane had made a site visit there. I don't know if he has any updates.
Yeah, I do. At the last meeting, there was a discussion about what I call a southwest ditch, and the section running from South Madison Street over to Walker Street, and the flooding in that area. Some of the residents down there are showing pictures of the flooding. I was aware of it. And first, let's talk about what your situation is now, and then talk about what I think you need to do to solve it. Number one, there was a, what I call a southwest ditch. On the upper end, next to Madison Street, you've got a 54-inch pipe discharging into the ditch. That's four and a half feet. The pipe that you installed through the ditch or in the ditch to make this lot buildable is 36. So, just based on observation, now that don't work. It goes down and connects to a pipe under Walker Street that's 30 inches. So it's getting smaller all the time. The pipe under Walker Street is reinforced concrete. It may have been there 100 years. It's, you know, the streets were dirt before the pavement houses. So it probably got the job done then. There is no visible outlet on the east side of Walker Street next to that yellow house there. I mean, the water comes down. There's no place for it to go except build it up, flood the yard, and then run across the street. Okay? That's your situation. In order, I did some preliminary calculations and some measurements to replace the 36-inch pipe that you have with a 30-inch pipe under Walker Street. You'd be looking at 184 feet of pipe. Preliminary indications are you need a 60-inch pipe. That's a pretty good size. It would need to be either concrete or plastic. I don't recommend the metal. It don't last in this part of the world. You'd also need to put a catch basin down in front of that yellow house down there where you go under the road to pick up the drainage along the east side of Walker Street and get it in the system under the road. That would still leave the section of ditch that's open now open. But this should handle it up to what engineers determine are called a 25-year rainfall event. That's like an event you'd expect to have based on 100 years of records, once in 25 years. Now, what that also says is if you go to the 50-year rainfall event, it may still come up and go over that pipe some. So, you know, you can't fix it for every rainfall event. You've got to stop and say what's reasonable and economical. Most projects that I do, the 25-year event is the design criteria, and that's acceptable in a lot of Georgia's drainage management. So, what I'm putting that out is that's what we need. I don't, I didn't have time to get prices on it. I didn't know if you wanted to go further with it. And then need to determine if you want us to detail this out for a contractor to do it, or the city's going to try to do it, and where we go from there. So that's basically what your problem is, what the indication of a solution is. So, I need some direction, either, you know, to go further. If we're going further, are we going to do it to put it out for contractors to bid on it? Are we going to do it to get it done and permitted for the city to do it? And the other thing I like is, you know, whichever way y'all want to go on the pipe. The concrete pipe, you know, is the best. The plastic pipe is more economical most of the time and easier to install, and there's nothing wrong with it. But I don't think it's as durable as the concrete. It doesn't, I mean, I don't know where it's been in 100 years, so.
Is this city carpet?
Yes. It's a ditch.
It's a big ditch.
Well, the ditch, the ditch has been maintained by the city forever.
By the city? Does it belong to the city?
As far as I know. It's a, I think-
We really need to clean it up someday, man.
I think it's prescriptive even.
So, as far as I'm concerned, I guess the council will listen to speak after this. I guess we need to, once we get the prices.
Well, I can get some estimates. It'll give you some budget numbers, so you can see about how much money you think you're going to spend, and I could price it from contractors and then, you know.
Yes, and that's what I was going to say, is see whether, once we see the price, we'll know whether we're going to have to try to do the work out simple, or whether we can afford to even contract it out. So, so yes, if you can give us estimates.
Yep. Budgeted.
Yes, but I guess we would need to, are there someone else? Anyone? Has anyone?
No, we need to estimate.
This would be out of the scope of our crews. This size pipe, we could not handle, not for the sake of-
And you need a catch basin, and that's a pretty good structure, too, to handle that pipe coming in and two going out. Either way, to pick up. So, I think you'd be better off to get it, we get it together, and you get a budget number. Proceed on that basis, and then see if we can put it out to contractors and get competitive bids sometime. You're pleasantly surprised.
Is there a motion? So, and I'll strike. Questions, concerns? All in favor, raise your hand.
I work on the whole budget number.
Next item is an update on the gas line extension. We are moving forward. We are right now getting quotes, and we're trying to get quotes on the boring and casing under the railroad. The railroad permit is $3,100 for this particular job. We have been in touch with Georgia Florida. They will expedite the permit for an additional $1,000, so that will come in at $4,200. Our consultant will do the taps without having to interrupt gas service for $2,500. The meter that we had anticipated using for this job will not handle the demand that will be placed from the plant there. So we will have to purchase a new meter for about $3,000. Our engineering costs right now are projected at $8,250. We will have to have our gas consultant engineer draw plans on this because the Public Service Commission is requiring it. He says that can be to them in a matter of days. So as an update, we're looking at right now $26,850. And we also have been delivered with a gas pipe.
And the 4-inch?
4-inch pipe.
Yes, would you like to speak?
How long will it take us to get our money back?
It depends on the flow of the plant, and it should be substantial. I think it would be a relatively short plate.
Oh. It ain't going to take long. Mr. Devane, right now, working on a project. We got 8,500 tons need to be running through that gas line right now. So that's, and we are bidding other projects, selling, got three, four, five, 10,000 tons of them. So, we're looking to make this plant very productive. We are hiring more people, but we only can do so much with where we at now. So with this gas line, hooking to this plant, it ain't going to take you long, Ms. Bowers. You can take your vacation next year if you go ahead and get it. So, it's very productive. It's very productive.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I guess that we have figures of stuff. Is there, well, we already, we already have approved-
It's just updating y'all.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Item number five or nine, excuse me, Electech revolving loan fund. We have attached a letter requesting Electech loan.
Thank you for the paperwork, for the research. We all have a fellow Steve, the meeting, the approval from the EIPR, meeting next. Okay, I have some questions. Is EIPR a project that you commute? Who do they call on this?
I can answer that. I've attached in your packet there the requirements for setting up the RLEC board. It's an underwriting policy dated November 13, 2008. It's attached in your packet there, and it is the goals, objective scope, eligible activities, and how it was set up by the city equipment to comply with DCA requirements. I think it's a seven-page document, and it was adopted November 13, 2008. And then, it's a pleasure, Mr. Mayor, back in, in the same, in those handouts I have there. there, back in April the second, twenty thirteen, and you'll see that there was a motion made. Mister Brown moved that the following individual would be appointed to serve on the city equipment EIPRLF project review committee pending their acceptance. And then the members that were on the board at that time were voted unanimous. That was in, excuse me, I think, two thousand and thirteen. And then the other documents there that were requested are attached.
All right. As councilman, does he have a motion?
I made a formal motion at least, except the revolving loan fund. Let's give the money to EIPR, please.
Is there a second to give the money to EIPR? Question, concern? All in favor, raise your hands. Issue downs.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ten is Evan Lane's drainage. The dams that were in the area have been cleaned. I would like to make you aware that in the near future, we may have to contract with tractors as the varmints that are in this area constructing those dams keep coming back in. But right now, we are maintaining the dams or the ditches in an open condition.
Does DNR just come, DNR doesn't just come and give?
They, they are reluctant to come in. We have to, what we have done in the past is a licensed trapper, like when we had problems here at City Hall, we can contract. We love to do private people that would come in to do it. I know the federal government has had some people on contract with them, so before we spend any money, we're certainly gonna check with the game commission and the, this escapes me now, the federal people, but they have actually done some removal of those in the county to a federal program.
I got a friend in Mowbray that works for him. He's about my age, but he used to trap them, but he don't do it no more. He just stays in Mowbray. He was an engineer up there. He's still, I'm saying.
We don't have alligators, thank God. Okay, thank you.
We have alligators, I think. Police chief and I caught one on Stevens Street last year, behind the Baptist church.
Someone asked me if it was.
No, that's true, we did. Item number eleven is the premium-only plan resolution. This is a resolution, a form of amended section one twenty-five, a cafeteria plan effective July first, twenty fifteen, and we would need to adopt it to remain compliant.
This doesn't actually, this doesn't point out an actual company, this is just a policy.
Right, can you help us with that?
Right.
Except we are complying with federal regulations.
This is basically all-in-one packet to make sure, as you all are aware, the portfolio care has brought along a lot of changes. This is one of the ways we make sure that we keep an up-to-date, all of the latest and greatest legislative updates and everything in there, as well as a packet that will be received by each employee, spelling out how we intend on running cafeteria plans. We'll go once the resolution is made, will come through. So, I brought a copy of the, all the regulations if anybody wants to see them.
Is there, seeing as how you have no choice, is there a motion?
I'm making for a motion, Ruth. About the permanent plan resolution number two seventy-five fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve is Crown Healthcare Laundry Services revolving loan fund request. City Equipment's EIPRLF project review committee held a meeting on May twenty-eighth at six P M. to review and make recommendations to the city council on a loan submitted by Crown Healthcare Laundry Services. Business plans and financials advocates were discussed by the committee. Project review committee with recommended approval of the loan in the amount of four-hundred and six thousand from the equipment EIPRLF funds for a term of eighteen months at free percentage interest.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a formal motion that leaves that the recommendations for the EIPRLF loan to Crown Laundry, the amount of four-hundred and six thousand dollars, for the terms of eighty-four months at free percentage interest.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your hands. Issue downs.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is a drawdown request for Georgia Bottle Company. Attached, DCA has been in touch with the city. They are very eager to get this money out before it has to be returned to the state. Attached are the community, Department of Community Affairs, request for drawdown of CDVG funds, a contract reimbursement request to the South Georgia R.C., the signature cards for the drawdown of the CDVG funds, and vendor management. And this was for the retention of jobs. If you recall, removed from creation to retention.
Is there, is there a motion?
I'll also make a formal motion that we proceed with the drawdown request for the CDVG funds to retain jobs to the bottle company.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Issue downs.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just say, I just wanted to say that I am so pleased tonight and proud tonight that we've been able to bring, retain jobs, also to create new jobs through our revolving loan fund, and I would just like to say that I think that this is a definite move forward to help improve in our city.
This was set up to be, to be jobs.
Exactly, and I feel so, I feel so good tonight to be able to say that, and all this is gonna be upwards of two hundred jobs that'll be available for citizens in our community, and I think that this is, for me, a great opportunity to say that this is what I've got in the seat to do, to help empower families to employment and to also empower the city to grow. So, I think that tonight we should all be knowing that we've done what we committed to do today.
Thank you.
And I think this closing will have to take place in the next day or two. Is that correct, Gerald?
Yes, sir. The Georgia Bottle Loan documents were emailed Friday, and I hope they'll be back to me tomorrow, and then once they're reviewed, they'll be shipped, copied up to DCA, I guess, or Miss Kimberly, and once they're approved, then the money will be paid out. Yes, with this, EIPR and working while the vote are critical, we get out and done quick.
Next item is Equipment Housing Authority. Attached is a certificate of appointment for Mister Willie Dolan, who serves resident commissioner for Equipment Housing Authority.
That was, I've already done that. I brought it, I brought it to myself. I think it was some confusion.
Yeah, Ms. Hudson said you requested it to be back on here.
I know, I gave it to Mrs. Lacy, but I don't think she was at the meeting, and I tried to tell her I needed to sign it, but I guess she, she didn't know, she wasn't at the meeting, so I thought she was gonna review the record so we could go sign it, 'cause I was ready to sign. That's okay. That's no problem.
You brought to me stating that you requested for this to be on the, on the agenda.
That's no problem, just miscommunicated.
We just.
Yeah, we agreed already. She, she wasn't here, and I tried to tell her, but I guess I didn't do a good job.
Our next item number is cable TV. Your sub-councils are there. This is one of those budget items that we really are at a loss to move forward on. I have some recommendations that we would need to implement immediately to stop some of that leakage of money from the cable system. One that I would like to see if y'all could move ahead with tonight would be a twenty-five-dollar installation fee on cable, and then prorating the bills from the time of the service immediately. And then I'll have numbers as far as rate or how we want the cable, if we're gonna get out of the cable business or if we're gonna stay in it. Irregardless, we would need to enact those two to try to stop some of that loss immediately.
Is there a motion?
I'm making a formal motion. We do the service charge of twenty-five dollars.
And pro-rate.
Pro-rated, right.
And that will help, and, I'm sorry, and I have some other budget figures I'll give y'all at when we discuss budget. Item number fifteen is Employee of the Month, and that's Mister Ricky Parker with a wastewater treatment. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Issue downs.
I apologize. Mister Ricky Parker is the June twenty-fifteen Employee of the Month. Item number sixteen is the Garden Club of Georgia grant. This grant was awarded to the Garden Club back in two thousand and twelve. There was no action taken on it for several years. My concern, I have contacted the Garden Club, they've given us an extension. They are very eager to get this money dispersed. My problem is, as y'all are aware, the Georgia Department of Transportation is doing improvements in our medias here in the next, who knows, couple of months. I would recommend we return this grant money to the Garden Clubs of Georgia. I would hate to go down there, put all this landscaping in, and then new traffic signals and posts be installed and ruin that landscaping. Their grant cost was three thousand dollars. I think that under the circumstances, if we look at doing this after their construction is done, the city could always look at budgeting that money. We do wanna improve the conditions of our medias through town, but I think it would be, especially with us having arguments with DOT about installing irrigation also. So, my recommendation would be that we return this money and then budget it in the budget to make these improvements in the future.
I agree. Is there a motion?
Well, there's a little bit more information. Remember, we discussed this, something about the way the grant was written up, with the information, it wasn't, it was old information?
There was some, there were some differences between how it was submitted and designed compared to what could actually be done. I did get them to extend it, but to be very honest with you, I've had, not had the time to look at redoing those plans. The other thing is, I think it would be improper that we put all this nice landscaping down there and then not be able to water it and maintain it. So, again, I think that we're not losing the project. I think that this kind of money certainly would be something I feel that the board would wanna move forward with, with any kind from the city and also for the existing funds. So, it would not stop the project, but the problem is DOT is not gonna tell me if they're gonna be in this week or a month from now, and that's really where the rub lies.
Is there a motion?
I'm making a formal motion. We send the money back to them, and if they have to.
And with, and.
And just wait, 'cause DOT is gonna do.
And maybe with the understanding that we do look at funding this project in the future.
Add an answer to it, to funding in the future, okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your hands.
I don't know. Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you hear that? It was Mister Plankton Steen and Mister Walker.
Okay, you did. All right. All opposed?
Yeah, are they? Are they? They don't hold it on.
I guess we got, we got two for, one against, and one extension, so you need to guess the same.
Okay. Well, that is, the vote, it didn't pass out.
No, it did, it's not tied, so it's worth a look. So, it failed.
Yes, it failed.
Mr. Bauer abstained?
Well, no, I didn't see her raise her hand. I didn't see anything weird at all. She didn't vote, did you, did you vote, Miss? Okay, well, that's, it wasn't one. So, they, those counted as abstaining? Okay, there are two abstains, and two, so it didn't pass.
My question would be that they're gonna be requesting their money back if we can't comply with the timeline. What do I need to do?
Because, from what I understand, you, I'm just trying to explain on this, if we don't complete this job by the time limit that they've been given, then we would be cutting them a check in three thousand dollars no matter what. You'd be sending away that, before their check uncashed, or we would be writing a check, because this is the state we're talking about?
It's, it's through several different garden clubs of Georgia, but they have, this was supposed to have been done years ago.
Yes, and we can't complete it in a time.
That's right, and even with the extension, I think it ends in the next day or two, and we tried everything we could do to get some type of formal information from DOT. It's not their fault, their money is just like everybody else's, but, but again, it's just not been something I've been able to devote enough time to, to move forward.
I guess they voted, so I guess, I guess we'll see what's gonna happen. I do have, I do have a correction. I was looking at the item numbers on your.
Yes, I was fixing.
It's two fifteen. So, it's actually fifteen is cable TV, sixteen is employee of the month, and seventeen is the garden club grant that we are not gonna want to send back. Now, with the, back to the item number two.
Is there a motion to approve?
Before y'all go into executive session, what, what is happening with these, with the employees? Is that what we're going back?
Yes, ma'am, I don't know.
Because as a term citizen, I don't believe thinking that we have firefighters that don't know whether there's.
Is there a motion to ratify Mr. Rooney, Rooney Hudson, a city clerk, Mister Benjamin Case Wayne White as a firefighter, and then we're here, Mister Trevor C. Keller Diokam as a firefighter? Is there a motion?
Gerald, would you please advise that this item has already been voted on, or if it's approved, is it fair for that, and to be determined that there is no illegality going on, this was a legal motion, second and vote, and they are ratified and hired?
Not called on by the chambers.
That's true.
Mister Mayor, I, you know, this is one of the scenarios that I discussed today with GMA and a couple other city attorneys anticipated something that just would come up, and, you know, the motion was put on the floor, and it was a second, even though you did state that, I believe it was Mister Bauer was out of order. And they proceeded to cast the vote, whether it was recognized by you or not, so I think that it's, in my opinion, it would probably stand up in court. It's certainly not the preferred way that we should do business, I don't think, but, you know, to do otherwise than what you would be doing is exercising a veto over any of the council's business, and our charter and code do not provide that you have the authority or the power to do a veto. So, I think if this got in front of a superior court judge, in all likelihood, he would approve it. Now, again, this particular issue, to my knowledge and the knowledge of GMA and some other people that have been longtime city attorneys, has never been brought before ruled by court, so I'm giving you my opinion, and that is the opinion, I think, that helps the opinion of Mister Patel and GMA and some other people, longtime city attorneys. I guess the only way that that would be resolved would be if it was brought in front of a superior court judge for the decision.
So if you all don't want to hold on this.
Gerald, at this point, Gerald, is this, because we're, this, okay. Roberts Rules of Order calls for, there is a remedy when the chair refuses to call the vote. Now, we need a definitive answer tonight and I know definitively that we are practicing the correct manner by which to do this. You need to say, or there needs to be a discussion, a clear answer, because there's no need to keep revisiting and asking for a motion that's already been motioned, that's already been seconded, that's already been voted on. These employees are ratified. There is a clear answer and the clear answer is yes or no. Are they ratified and hired based on the vote decided on by the council?
In my opinion, yes.
Thank you.
It's just an opinion.
He's.
Yes, sir, you're correct.
Yes, that's just an opinion. So I told you, I signed the checks, I do the payroll. So say what you wanna hear, because I didn't call the vote, and I'm gonna act accordingly. So I'll just give you one more chance to ratify these three people.
They've already been.
Okay, well, they won't want to pay off.
Can I ask a question?
If you're asking me.
Yeah, I'll ask you. If you don't sign a check, can Ms. Bradley sign? Or can't she?
Only if you read the charter, it says.
Oh, boy.
Only if, I, and that, if I'm not around to do my job, period. If I, for some reason, I can't do my job. She's not, she's only the mayor pro temp in my absence.
Well, can we change this, Mr. Attorney?
Certainly, the charter can be amended, though they can't amend it by the council, certainly.
But the charter has to go before the Georgia General Assembly.
No, sir, it doesn't.
The charter has to go before the Georgia General Assembly?
No, sir, it does not. It does not.
It would try.
Mr. Mayor, the charter was amended to provide that you are the mayor versus the chairman of the city commission. The Home Rule Act authorizes the mayor and council, the commission, to amend the charter in certain ways. What they cannot do is change the form of government. Now, that would be something that would be required by the General Assembly, but minor things entered charter, such as who can sign the checks, or some other things of that nature, would be things that could be amended by this body as a whole. So, but it's under the College, under the Home Rule Act.
Well, as I said, I do the payroll. So if you don't wanna ratify them, then they won't be on the payroll and we can go to the executive session. I'm done talking about it. If you don't wanna do it.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, Ms. Hudson is already working. I mean, she's already working and I mean, they need to be on payroll because the chief needs firefighters and we citizens, we deserve that. We don't deserve to go home tonight and not have a full force of firefighters when they're here and ready to work and they're qualified. So could, I mean, and I'm not, I'm not saying just you, but could the city council just tonight, just ratify these three that are already here and Ms. Hudson and the two that are here ready to start work so that they know, so that they're not in the middle of this discussion? And then you all hash out about Mr. Waters. Could we do that so that these young men would at least know? I mean, I'm asking all the council.
Ms. Holland, you don't need to do that.
I know you don't.
I'm saying, our attorney, I'm saying, and I totally understand what you're saying, but our attorney has already advised us that this is legally binding. There's no issue.
But if these young men come to work or Ms. Hudson, they're gonna get paid.
They'll come to work and they will be paid. They will come to work and they will be paid.
When do they start to work?
And that's gonna be at the discretion of the chief. As of right now, as of this minute that we, as of the prior vote, they were, they are hired and ratified employees of the city equipment. All four individuals are. Our attorney has advised us that it is a legally ratified vote and that they are, that they are legally ratified according to our vote. There is no concern. I understand your concern because of some issues that have happened in the past, but we have seeked, I've seeked legal counsel. I have taken recommendations on how to handle the situation according to Roberts Rules of Order and we have voted tonight as a unified council unanimously that these individuals are ratified. And our attorney has just given us his legal recommendation that it is legal and they are hired, they are ratified, and they will be paid.
So when do they start work? I mean, when would they start, Jim?
Well, I started at work, it's been here a couple of months.
That's what I'm saying. And she's not gonna be paid?
No. Yeah, she's been paid.
Oh, she's already been paid?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
So we've been paying her?
She's been paying her money.
I signed the checks.
But I mean, I know, and you're, but you've been paying her.
Yes, ma'am.
So why would you stop paying her?
He brings up all of these kind of things.
There is no stop. There is no stopping.
Now, I'm not understanding. You said you've been paying her, but now you're saying.
No, I didn't say that. They said that.
But you haven't been paying her? She's been working without pay?
Do you wanna answer that question, Mrs.? Mrs.? It's up to you. I said, do you want to answer that?
No, no, she don't.
And we shouldn't involve these, we shouldn't involve the chief and put him on the spot and these young men. We shouldn't involve them in this, y'all.
I agree. Is there a motion to ratify these three personnel, as I asked? Mr. Willie.
I've been sitting there listening and you answered a legit question. He said, that's his opinion. You in charge of this meeting and you asked a question about the three people and all they had to say yes or no. And I don't see no problem in that. You're legally right.
That's your opinion.
No, 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 no.
And he's an attorney.
Sorry, sorry.
If I let you speak, let him speak.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Like, like was stated, you asked the question and they should, you asked them about the three people and all they had to say was nay or yeh. And so you in charge of this meeting and to me, like some kind of conspiracy against the mayor and I have a problem with that because you in charge of the meeting and in this meeting, you more or less, they, and I have a problem with it, they tried to override you. And our legal counsel said, and he said it kind of beautifully, he said, this is my opinion. He said, well, this, this written in stone, that's all I'm saying. And how do three people, and let me go on to watch, let me go on to watch New Orleans. I miss my other show and no problem with that. You said, well, table that, you needed some more dial, which I thought was legit. About the other person, you can hire him, but all you asked was, I need more dial. And I, and I can't see a problem in that. What I see here is some kind of conspiracy against the mayor. Now, I have a problem with that. Thank you.
May I say something? I have all of the newspapers available from January up until today and sometimes it's very difficult to find things in the newspaper ads that can be put in a different place. I'll be glad to supply you with all of the papers and help you go through them to find the ad for Mr. Waters.
That's all I'm saying.
If that would be helpful and then you would have concrete information about him.
Okay.
I shouldn't speak, I shouldn't say anything, but we're sitting back here, we listen to everything that's been said. And the city manager said, he had it, but it's locked up. Go up and get it. Can you get it? Then this will all be over when you say it had been done. It's locked up in the safe, so you can't get.
I do not have the combination to the safe. That's where the city.
Oh, you can't solve this.
And I can assure you that there was an ad placed in the paper regarding maintenance and motor.
With documentation, that's what he's asking for.
And there is. And it was placed in there at the request of the mayor. Would we have those other jobs?
I take you for it.
Question is, where?
I don't know. Nobody's taking over. Give me documentation.
When it's a paper trail?
And we do keep papers.
And I can supply all of the papers to research.
All right, go ahead. This is my issue. We're, we are holding the city hostage. One person cannot do it, the mayor cannot, the mayor pro temp or the council members cannot hold the city hostage. You cannot stop the payroll, like I said, other citizens have to be, other employees have to be paid. You cannot ask for a specific motion worded, however you want it worded. You have to ask for the motion. And whichever the motion is, whichever way it goes, your job is to call for the vote. You cannot specify the motion.
That is negative.
No, that's not. No, that's not. You cannot, you cannot specify.
So if you put something on here illegal that we're not supposed to have, just because somebody admitted in Blackwater, you pick, I'm supposed to let you all vote on it, whether it's illegal or not?
If someone made a formal motion that was illegal or not, you have to call for the vote.
So you're saying I would have to let you all vote for something that our charter says we shouldn't vote? Just because someone put it on here, I don't know if I, I'm supposed to let you vote on it, even if it's illegal?
If, if the motion is made, you have to call for the vote. Whatever the motion may be. Now, we're back to this point where we're taking the city attorney's word, I mean, the city attorney's word or the city manager's word. Now, if we're gonna not take his word on item number two, then we cannot take his word on any other items. So all those, all those.
You say this?
No, no.
I didn't tell you it's written on there, EIP, RLF, he went and did all this research and gave me this information.
If y'all would like to adjourn, I would be glad to go get that paper, that ad.
But this is, so now we're holding, so now we're holding, now we're holding out mosquito spraying and other, and other things to, that the citizens' equipment, you said earlier, our responsibility to run the city effectively. It's not our responsibility to hire department heads. I, I understand firefighters shouldn't be being here tonight. That's the chief's job to hire them on his recommendation. I don't know how to hire a firefighter and I can speak, none of us, the rest of us know how to hire a firefighter. We take his recommendation to what he, they are qualified, I don't even know what the training they went through to do, you know, to be qualified. The fire chief, the police chief hires at his discretion. I don't, I am not sure what Mr. Waters would do for the city. That's at the city manager's discretion. We're not department heads. We take their recommendation and we move forward and if something was to be a problem, it's our job to then correct.
We're not arguing that. We, we, we argue protocol.
We're talking protocol.
No, you talking about, you, you talking about qualification.
No, I'm talking about, the fire chief hires the fire department, that's protocol.
Talking about protocol. He, all, all he may ask was, I'll have enough documentation.
Why does he need it?
Because he asked.
If you're going off his recommendation, why does he need it?
Because he looked for it, he couldn't find it.
But he, why does he need it? If you're going off somebody's recommendation, why does he need it?
No, no, no.
It is not.
He's the mayor, he's not the king. He's the mayor, not the king. And this whole group makes decisions for the city, not just him.
I, that's, I'm saying, he, he's in charge of the meeting.
The meeting. The meeting, not the city.
Not the city.
And we have no business, and we honestly have no business in the hiring process because when there's a termination, the council is the.
A pilot.
We should not be in the hiring process of the firefighters, of the police department, of the wastewater or gas department, any employee of the city. There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a protocol. You mentioned the word protocol. There's a protocol. There's a protocol that we hire. There's no employee that we approve. We only hire the city manager.
But he said, he said, put it in the paper. He said it wasn't in the paper.
It is, it's in the paper.
But I'm talking about, I'm not saying, I'm saying over a period of time. That's, that's what I'm saying.
You, you just said protocol.
That's right.
If the protocol's what runs one week, then we met protocol.
Let's not get confused with ratification and hiring. Those are two different things.
It does seem like.
So, so the hiring process is not official until the ratification is done. The firing process is not official until the ratification is done. So if, if you all would.
These individuals are hired, they have been ratified today, they have been hired today, they have been, so they have been hired whatever, they've been ratified today and voted on legally and binding, so there's really no discussion or no other motion that needs to be taken at this point. And I appreciate what your, what your attempt at explaining, Mr. Blankelsey, what's going on here, because we are not the hiring staff here. We hire our city manager to manage our city. That means he is the hierarchy and administration. That's his responsibility. That's his sole responsibility. That's in the charter. He works for us and no one else hires.
That, that means that I execute.
The direction of what the council.
That means that I'm the only executive, as a legal, and the, and the government is legislative, executive, and judicial. I am the only one here that's a part of the executive, part of the government. And that means that I am, by law, able, able to execute anything in here.
You can execute, at the pleasure of whom though, Mr. Mayor?
It's no pleasure. It says I would demean myself for the city. And, and your own says the same thing.
It definitely does. And I'm just saying, I'm, all I'm saying is, my only question is, let's just get this on camera. Let's just say this. Let, let me just ask this question. We have a weak mayor, let me say this first, we have a weak mayor form of government, which means that the mayor votes in the event of a time, which means that the mayor is basically a part of the council and the city manager works at the discretion of the city council. All things have to go through the majority vote of the city council. That's just basic civics.
That's not.
Now, when we left on Tuesday night, because you refused to call for the vote, because I guess we're just gonna have to get to this point and I'm letting Mr. Go, not wanting to go home too. But when you left, when we all left the meeting on Tuesday night because there wasn't a storm, why didn't you just handle the city business in its entirety while yourself here? If you don't need anybody else, if you're the chief executive officer, you're the end all be all, why didn't you just handle all the business yourself? Why is Mr. Herron here still working? You recommended that he be fired. Why is Gerald still here working? Because you recommended that he be fired. So if you had the power to do everything in here and everything is at what you want, everything is at your interpretation, everything is what you determine it to be, then why don't you run this meeting by yourself? Because you don't have the power.
I don't have to answer your question because, one, I didn't give it forward. You're out of order.
That's one thing I'm aware of. He's memorized. He's memorized.
You're out of order too. No sidebar allowed. And let me, let me explain something to you. Explain something to you.
Are you stopping me?
You is a plural word, the council. Okay? You all keep saying and stuff, and stating and stuff, but inconsistent. So do you want to go into executive session? Because that's what I asked a couple times. So we can do this, so we can do this termination or do you all want to?
Are we just accepting the recommendation of termination? Because if they.
It says ratification in the charter. Do you need me to read it to you?
Gerald wants to speak.
If the vote to ratify the termination is gonna have to be made in an open meeting, we can't go into executive session. I mean, we can go into executive session and discuss it, but the vote has to be out in a local meeting.
I understand that. That's all you want to say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I knew that. So are we going in there to, to discuss this or you all just wanna vote on it without a pickboard and just follow me? Because I know you got a pickboard, so I'm just saying.
Don't go in, sir. As we previously stated, we are the appealed process to the termination. We do not even know the details of the determination because then that makes all of us biased and we cannot make a unbiased decision. So we accept the recommendation of the city manager through the fire chief and.
The appeals process is over. Am I correct, Mr.?
The appeal process with the city is, could possibly be over, but that doesn't really be the one.